An exposure basis.
Well, I got that as my question to you Frank, I mean, we can't do much more than what y'all asked us to do, but yet, we pay forty thousand, twenty thousand, more every year, and we do everything supposed to be done, and the city is doing a great job on breaking everything down in this compensation plan. So, I mean, that's what bothers me, but we still get twenty-four thousand added to it, forty thousand, last year was twenty-six thousand, year before it was fifty thousand, but yet, we as a city is doing everything possible to make that premium lower, but it's not, it's never lower.
Yeah, and the bigger number for you, or for the city, for the taxpayers, are your variable costs, your actual claims costs, and you're absolutely right, because of the way the city has taken loss control serious, we've had some good outcomes from litigation standpoint, your variable cost has decreased exponentially every year for the past six, seven years, quite frankly, with the exception of a couple shock losses, but your claims counts have gone down, and your claim values have gone down, and that number is much larger than the fixed cost of your insurance program. So, you have saved money over the course of the past seven years if you combine your variable cost with your fixed cost.
Well, I don't know, I guess it just bothers me because in the last, twenty twenty, we had a two thousand to do the premium, two hundred thousand, from four seventy-one to six seventy-two, and yet, we've done everything possible that y'all asked us to do, and you've been involved in that too, and we've done everything, and done a good job doing it. I mean, the city has done everything it's possible, but yet, the premium just keep going up. That's my question, that was it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence, I think you had a question.
You touched on it, Mr. Bordeaux, and I just wanted to get it on the record, because of the city doing a great job with workman comp claims and those types of things, that expenses went down, but as the cost of everything, premiums, you know, whether it's property health, or workman's comp insurance, those costs have went up.
That's the values of Janet.
All right.
So, I just wanted to point that out, and today, what we're reviewing on this today, this isn't health insurance or any kind of other insurance, we're strictly looking, you know, at our liability insurance today.
Clearly, your liability insurance, yes, sir. With the exception of your whole coverage, that's the only property part of this there is, and the whole coverage had zero change.
Okay, any other highlights you want to, you know, just touch on, other than the workman's comp claims, how we've been managing those, because those are very good when you look at the report, those are exceptional, probably some of the best anywhere, any city on the coast.
Our comp claims are doing fantastic, the lag time, so the comp claims are getting turned in at a quicker rate than what we've seen in the past, and every department across the board have had increase, or better results from a claim standpoint over the past seven years. And so, in the administration reviews, y'alls, and we do a deep dive into all y'alls' claims, the insurance committee looks at that, as well as administration, to see how we're performing throughout the course of a year. So, the only time the city looks at this is not today, we do it throughout the course of the year as well, and if we see an uptick in a department, Mr. Leonard is really quick to attack that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bordeaux, any other questions?
Right, appreciate it.
Comments? Thanks so much for your time this past week, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. I have, I don't know where my technical staff went, you can flip it, okay, it's part of the report, we have some pictures, I think Sherry and Jamie and him have brought up regarding the progress on a couple of things, that right now is softball field, that as it's been turfed, right, this is A.J. Holloway Sports Complex, the dirt that you see in one of the fields, that's the baseball field, part of that girls' or the softball complex. Go to the next one, Michelle, please. Okay, that's, you know, another angle of what the softball looks like, and you can see the artificial turf in brown tied up, but it's about twenty feet of turf that we resotted and then integrated right into the rest of the field. I think that's pretty much what it looks like now, we painted a lot of things, and we may actually look at some pressure washing, that those roofs look a little bit orange, but I think they really need to be red, and we have a plan yet, we talked about that yesterday. Next, Michelle, please. Again, that's what it was, you can see to the left part of that screen, that's, they were actually completing the other field, but, so that's what it looked like when it was gotten down to where they started installing the turf, and then the extra sod that went up against that field. Next, good, again, that's some of the painting we did, Sherry does about thirty thousand dollars worth of painting, okay, and repairing all of the cement problems that have been over the years. Next, good. Again, this is Little League at this point, and that's the turf that they'll be playing on. Next, another angle, I think we hit a little water the other day, and that's probably where some of the material in water from the rain we hit the other day. Again, that's next. This is redoing the entire parking lot where the laydown area was, where all the dirt was saged and managed, that's going to be in the next few weeks completely covered, right, striped, they have a new parking lot there. Okay, go. Again, this is the soccer complex spiffied up, and you look at the black fence, next, good. Again, more of the black fence at baseball, I mean, soccer and football field, the last, straightening up and rolling, some of getting the surface just right is what's the next step over the next few weeks. Next, okay, again, more of the installation of the fence and material on that complex, go. Again, baseball, it's Little League baseball, more fencing, that's looking back towards the girls' softball complex, next, I think we've got tennis court up there, more baseball. All right, that's some of the LED at the tennis courts, okay, more LED, more tennis courts. Okay, now, that, this is, brings us, that's actually Iris Street looking down at what has been cleared, of course, they've done more than that at this point, but this is Iris Street going between the railroad tracks and Pass Road, go next, and this is actually Cavalier Park, that has, the debris and all the things that had stacked up over the years has been removed, it's Public Works, and everybody did a good job in getting that where it was. Bob, you'll agree, that's pretty good progress right there, right? Next, I think that's pretty much it. That's it, okay, well, thank you, that's just in brief, you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer to you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, you have a question?
The telephone pole with the lights on it was sinking, what'd y'all do to correct that problem?
Say that again, the light.
The light poles that was sinking, someone was sinking up to the electrical box.
Electrical box at the sports complex? Tennis courts? We have an electrical problem at the.
Those that were sinking.
I'm not aware of anything sinking.
To correct that problem.
All right, this is at the sports complex, Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, right, the light poles.
Okay.
Light pole?
All around the field, or the baseball, the little baseball field.
Maybe a soccer field, maybe?
They might have sunk three or four feet, so I just wondered what we did to correct that problem.
I'm not aware of the problem, I think all the poles that we've messed with as far as LED and replacement of that, but we took a lot of the spare poles off of tennis and replaced them in girls' softball, as well as the other places, I'm not aware of any kind of problem with the actually installation on those poles, we'll double check.
When we had the, we had the contractors out there who was repairing all those lights and going around all those poles, we had them check all those poles, and there was no damage or anything back with them.
Well, I was just saying, that's something that has to be corrected, because we did, they're going to sink more and more, the fence was pulling up, and the poles on the side of those ball fields were down two or three feet into the ground, to the way the electrical box was on the light pole.
We'll get our engineers and the contractor to see if there's correction that needs to be done. I'm not aware of it, you're not aware of it, we'll.
I've been telling y'all about the last couple of years when you started, they should be aware of it. I brought this up before, we went out there and looked at it.
Well, we'll figure it out, I'm just telling you, there's a bunch of light poles out there, I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
Right, they were sinking. It's not new, it's not new.
Well, I'll look at it and get a report on it, yeah.
All right, so you'll have an engineer check that, Mayor, and get back to us, all right. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
No, that concludes my report.
There you go, all right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, council reports, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we had a busy weekend down on the East Biloxi, on the point, we had the seafood museum drawdown, we had the seafood festival, we had the tunnel run, we had another event at the park, the pavilion, so that place was packed down there, and all of them had a big crowd, and it looked like everything turned out well, that was good, East Biloxi. Question to Popo on the street committee, can you hear me, Popo?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, I've turned in one name, another lady called, her name's Alex Boss, she'd like to be on the street committee, two names, have you accepted either one of them, or what are you doing with these people that want to actually serve on a street committee?
We just had an appointment last week to Ward Two Council, Ward Two Amendment, I'm not aware, you know, get that to our office and we'll move forward with that.
Well, the one I sent you was a lady named Kelly, I sent you the address, and the other one called me today, this Alex Boss, and she wants to.
Get me the details, I'll get, you know, get the details and we'll move forward if we can. I'm not sure how many vacancies we have left, how many, do we have any?
Thank you.
Two left, okay, we filled one the other day.
Award one. I'm just trying to get that for you, so we could pick them and call them back, or whatever you need for me to do, we'll do it.
Thank you.
The other thing is, I've asked you about paving Comfort Place from Lee to Keller, so the people can build houses, build two, three houses right there, I didn't know, you ever put that in the paving budget, or we got to get that, these people want to build houses. So, I mean, this is something that we need to pave Comfort Place, and then the other man is trying to fix up all the property, extend Jenkins Lane past Keller, they could build another two or three houses on the extension point. I mean, people want to build nice houses, here we are holding them up because we won't pave the streets, or extend the streets.
Wait a minute, there's never been a request for to extend Comfort Place to Keller Avenue. Okay, let's get this in requests by some people wanting to build houses, we're not aware of who wants to build where, we need to get actually definition, what we're requesting to do.
They want to build on the corner of Comfort.
Who wants to build on the corner? Be a name, and we'll make sure it happens.
These people waiting for you to pave the streets, that's all.
That's not how it works, George, these people, I don't know these people, let's figure out who it is and we'll move it forward.
Well, we need to move forward, we don't need to talk about it, we need to do it. That's what we need to do, there's something that needs to be done.
Okeydokey.
The thing on Rousen's, that's supposed to be tomorrow, cutting a ribbon?
No.
But Rousen's, the new store in Biloxi?
No.
That should be a big thing for us. We have downtown Craig Highs adding another new.
October sixteenth, I think, is what it is.
Downtown, so that's two good things happening downtown also. So, I mean, if you want to move forward, let's keep it up, don't be hesitant. Put your, hey, put the pedal to the metal, daddy.
Okay.
Okeydokey, pedal to the metal, we'll end on that note, Mr. Guines?
Let me write that down.
We got a, next weekend, we got a civil liberties meeting next weekend, and I'll give more details later, thank you, that concludes my report.
Ms. Newman?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Cleaning it out, the Broadwater property, are we still making progress?
Yeah, we've surveyed a lot, a little bit further to the east of Iris, but they're actually stacking up, my neighborhood watch, it's kind of keeping us posted. Yeah, we are, again, I think we've done a lot of things, and I think there's going to be some things in the paper in the next couple of days about, you know, what we're doing to maybe enhance the whole situation with the homeless and the movement from the property that's been cleaned. They've done a pretty good job from east of Iris, and we're hopeful that we can continue to make it as, you know, as reasonable, you know, the quality of life needs to be continued to progress. The next move is, I think we've got a trailer that was located at Mercy Cross, that the need now to have a double duty of that trailer is a police substation, as well as an assessment desk or office space for open doors in that, right there by Hollis, or right by Cavalier Park. We, I think we have water and sewer hookups that we can connect it to, and that was our last step. As I said, I think to the paper, hopefully, you know, four to six weeks, we'll have that trailer ready to, painted and ready to go there, so that'll at least give us a presence there at that site around the Broadwater, because the activity is at that Broadwater property, and even to the further to the west, Brady Drive, everything's moving that way.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman, Mr. McGilvery.
Just one comment, Mayor, the Public Works crew that's doing the work on the sidewalks of Pops Ferry?
Mm-hmm.
I was out talking to them this morning, and they're at, I think, Motzy and Pops Ferry, they've been out there about a week doing an excellent job. Talked to Mr. Lee, I think he was the crew chief that was out there, and said that they'll eventually be coming all the way down, across the bridge, down to Pass Road is what he told me, which was great, but they were doing an outstanding job, and, you know, we all have received a lot of calls about that situation on the sidewalk, I just wanted to thank you and thank them for being out there, they're doing a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery, Mr. Glavine.
Yeah, I have a few things, but I want to start off on a feel-good story with the New Orleans Saints, I noticed that Mr. Cowboy Guines was bragging, had his stars on and all that kind of stuff, we appreciate your going out there and cheering all the boys, the boys from the bayou as well, so I know you got a place in your heart for our Saints and the Cowboys, but that was good to see you, you out there, you were still smiling after that beat down, but anyway, I'm going to get off of that. All right, on to some other stuff. Thanks for the presentation on the A.J. Holloway Sports Plex, it looks super, every day it looks better, we're really anticipating the opening of those fields. I know Director Bell, you were working on a scoreboard issue with possible sponsorship, any new news on that, are you still kind of negotiating? And by the way, there's more than one potential sponsor, probably there's some competitors that would like to get in that game if one unbox at it, so.
We have a meeting set up September thirtieth with Coca-Cola.
Okay.
That's who approached us first, so.
I think we were looking at ten scoreboards.
Ten scoreboards.
Yeah, that'd be great, to see that enhancement and see, yeah, I agree with you, Mayor, that red, brand-new paint job would really set that off out there, thank you, Director, for that update. This is for engineering, I know as a sidebar, we talked about Stacy Lane and Shawanowitz, to get a kind of a cost estimate on there, to see if we could do in our local agreement with our supervisor, any updates on that, or we're still kind of working through it?
Not only specifically on that, but on a lot of things about, you know, the sharing of, the question is, what do we need to do subsurface in order to take advantage of what they're willing to do as far as putting a surface? I know a number of them have some issues that need, and we don't want to do everything and tear it up again, but that's on this, we discussed that on our Monday engineering, but we'll visit a number of roads that have been suggested, we'll make sure that we don't need to do what we need to do subsurface, before we ask them to do what needs, team up with.
Appreciate that, Mayor, this particular road, it's kind of a small, narrow road, but it does have significant wear and tear, to call some of the potholes, or there's one, two or three major potholes, they're more like craters, I think they exceeded the pothole definition, and then there's some limbs that are overhanging, I don't know if it's up to that thirteen or whatever that minimum height is, but if we can just throw that in the hopper to assess that as we move toward a potential project, I understand, I'm not asking somebody to run out there today and make it, you know, brand-new, but at least do the assessment, know what we're dealing with if we have the opportunity to pull the trigger. Also, Mr. Lawrence, on all the activity this weekend, not to be excluded, is the renaming of Keesler Federal Park, it's out there with the mayor and a couple of the council members, and the chamber, and both chambers, and by the way, the suckers did make the playoffs, I think they're playing today.
Today.
You know, against the Montgomery Biscuits. And then finally, I also want to touch on Pops Ferry Road, I was out there as well today, they were working near Lamy Road on the Iverville Line, all the way down, you know, a couple thousand feet, and it just looked good, it looked like there was a crew that was on a mission, and you could see them putting the cones out, doing their work, and I've already got some calls from four or five people that said it's wonderful to see that type of activity, when we have the resources to do so, and I believe at this time, that'll conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine, Mr. Shoemaker.
Just a couple of things, excuse me, Public Works, hats off to them, they were out recently and cleaned out a few ditches that I had sent in requests on, and mowed a few ditches, I know they've been busy, so hats off to them for getting to that for me, and I know the residents there are ecstatic, because I've had several contact me back and telling me so. And lastly, Eagle Point Park, we had some signs out there that have been slanted, I guess when they were, you know, put in some time ago, they were slanted for some reason, and kind of really off-the-wall slanted, very petty, but still, they were taken care of, they're all level now and straight, so I appreciate that getting done as well, and that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker.
Mr. President, let me add a couple of things, we forgot, your city attorney and I represented the city, you know, it was an Air Force golf, Biloxi Bay Area Golf Tournament this weekend at Bay Breeze, and it was actually the eighty-first anniversary of the Air Force, and there was an Air Force ball, a former commander delivered a Kennedy, she's now Brigadier General, so it was two little events I failed to mention while all of the other activities, a lot of weekend activity, and everybody had a good time, so thank you, I'm sorry for not including in the first report.
You didn't hit anybody with a golf ball?
No injuries, Peter, Peter carried the team too.
Okay.
Supported our troops to try, as I said, the referee stopped the contest in the fourteenth round, that's what we.
All right, I really just have two things, a reminder, I have a Ward Five meeting next Tuesday at September twenty-fourth at 6:00 p.m. at the Snyder Center on Pass Road. Also, Project BEA One, Two, and Three, there are a number of streets that intersect with Highway Ninety, the south end of the streets, for example, Edgewater Drive, Eisenhower, Oakmont Place, can't remember the name of the street there, you'll know, I suspect, by Woody's.
Althea.
Althea, but as they've gone through there, some of those have temporary asphalt down, which is great, and some of them do not, and I know with Cruising the Coast coming up, that may be something we want to look at, or would hope to have that completed, but the other thing is particularly on Oakmont, which is in Ward Five, it's dirt, and periodically it's been graded, and this last time, I think they came in because the erosion is such, after any heavy rain, that it's, looks like a motorbike trail, motocross trail there, but I think anything we can do to get temporary asphalt down now, particularly in the next week or two here, would be to everybody's advantage, but I know the residents get tired of driving through all that, it's uneven, it's mucky, so that concludes my comments, but I really, hey, George?
Hello there?
Miller's here.
Chief Miller's here, he's up on his feet, he's approaching the mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see you earlier, and I wanted to ask if you looked at anything with that Forest Avenue, when you looked, you said you're looking at maybe the people that's complaining about the speeding, about putting some speed bump down, did you run a report on that?
We haven't yet, we have a traffic committee meeting coming up, and that's when we'll discuss it and formulate a report, that's coming up soon.
Good, appreciate that.
All right.
Another thing, Popo, I had a couple of calls this morning before the meeting about cleaning Forest Avenue, the grass is growing through the sidewalks and all that, I don't know if you went down there, I know you ride down there a lot, so could you put your eye on that, see if we can get that cleaned up?
We will, we're trying, the whole Oscarinda sections of the city have that same situation, and we're working on that.
All right, well, I'll check back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, now we're moving on quickly to the public agenda, if there's anybody on my left who has a comment, your right, anybody on my left, Mr. Silvestro, let me remind everybody, we'll allot up to forty-five minutes for citizens' comments, each individual will have up to three minutes, as you sit down, please sign in and state your name, so the clerk can get it into the record. With that being said, let me take a deep breath and we'll begin. Mr. Silvestro.
Hi. I just want to thank everyone, obviously, it's all coming together, it hasn't been easy to do. It hasn't been easy to do, but it's actually exciting, I've seen a lot of people coming through, I noticed the ladies of the neighborhoods are starting an evening walk, where they all walk together, I saw some young kids, not that it was terrible, but, you know, out playing, and there's, people are walking their dogs and starting to do more things, and it's really nice to see a plan, it's a lot of work, it's got a lot going on, and just want to let everyone know, and appreciate it, a lot's happened since I moved here, and you guys are working to make it a better place for employees to work. The one thing by spending time with the people, I guess you would say boots on the ground, is that they feel as if their voice isn't being heard. So, a lot of people are there and wonder how this happens, I don't know, maybe they just complain, I'd like to get to a point where you pay them enough money and things are going, if somebody wants to go work for golf port, see ya. I think this is a great city, everybody listens and responds, and the police department's amazing, but, I don't know, maybe we could have a little cookout for the employees, or do something, bring everybody together, that's it, that's my ten minutes, thank you. Two minutes, three minutes, bye.
Close enough, thank you, Mr. Silvestro, anybody else on my left, your right, anybody on my right, your left, anybody in the back? Well, we have heard from half of the public who were here today, the other half want to be heard. Okay, that concludes citizens' comments, we'll move to the policy agenda, we have a couple of first readings, if the clerk would read item A, please.
Ordinance to amend Code of Ordinance, Chapter Twelve, Article Twelve, Mobile Food Vending.
I'll entertain a motion.
To move?
By Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
I'll second it.
By Mr. Guines, thank you. Again, this was only a first reading, that brings us to the next item, if the clerk would read item B, also a first reading.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinance, Section Fifteen dash one dash two, to address compensation schedule and pay rates.
Is there a motion? I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Glavine, again, this was a first reading, thank you, that brings us to the resolutions, item four C, if the clerk would read that item.
Resolution authorizing acceptance of the risk management insurance program for the City of Biloxi.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
It's a motion by Mr. Glavine. A second by Mr. Lawrence, discussion, Mr. Glavine.
Well, I think we've kind of reviewed this risk management, you know, issue a little bit, Peter, is there anything, any other highlights we need to be aware of, or?
No, this is, I guess Walt Warren's now in.
No, this is, I guess Walt Warren's now in charge of, they're known as Associated Adjusters. They're under cadence. Arthur Gallagher has bought them out in the last year or so, but it's all the same core folks. They do a great job handling claims for not only the city, but also Harrison County and Gulfport. They've got great experience in working with our people, and they make my job a lot easier. What Frank was bragging about the claims, they're the boots on the ground for a lot of that. A lot of the claims we don't see because they take care of them.
Yeah.
And I can't say enough about them.
The only thing I got to add, I mean, after reviewing the claims and reviewing the success rate, I mean, it's an amazing, I mean, that's an amazing achievement, you know, as far as what we, so we're on top of it when these claims come through. So that's a good thing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Lawrence, comments?
I hope the insurance company could change. We do the right thing. It's something we have to have, that we need, you know, we'll vote for it. But I just think it's time for this insurance company. If we just charge and charge and charge it, let them do something for the $672,000, $316. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other questions, comments? There being none, call for the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented. If you would, state your, again, state your name and your vote. Mr. Lawrence, yes. Mr. Guines?
Guines, yes.
Yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right. That's a 7-0 vote for the clerk. Thank you. All right. This brings us to the next item, 4D, which is formerly 5F. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Resolution authorizing entry into special events agreement with Cruisin' the Coast Incorporated for the 2024 Cruisin' the Coast to be held citywide.
I'll move it.
All right. So there's a motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Glavine. All right. And the resolution, I believe, the original resolution was listed at $30,000, and then we had a substitute. Is that correct? Or no, we do not have a substitute. Okay. So it's for $30,000. And there's, I expect discussion on the amount based on our budget workshop from a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Lawrence was not available, was not present at that workshop. Ms. Newman was not present. So we'll have discussion and settle on an amount. That being said, Mr. Lawrence?
I thought the request by Woody was fair enough, since we imposed something on him that was something different with the new special events. So I thought moving to the $30,000 was the correct thing to do. He requested $30,000, and I thought that's what we should do, not 25. We should go back to the $30,000 because he has stood with us. He comes to every meeting, and everything y'all want him to do is a special event. So I just think the man created 30, 32 million for the Gulf Coast and 35 million for the state. That $5,000 we're giving back to him is probably the best $5,000 we'll spend ever. The money's been back to the City of Biloxi. It's unbelievable. So I think it's worth putting that back to $30,000 like what he requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I'll support Councilman Lawrence's support of the $30,000. I thought that's what we did originally. I also went back and looked at the video, and it seemed a little vague that it was brought up, that they had requested 30. In past years, it's been 25, 20. No one actually said yes or no. And then basically, I think our president said, "Okay, it sounds like there's a consensus for 25." And I don't think we heard the last remark of 25 clearly to mean that we were going to reduce it to 25. That's just my impression. After saying that, I would also like to reiterate what Councilman Lawrence said. This is a coast signature event, and Biloxi's part of the heartbeat of this event as well. The request of $30,000 for something that brings in millions year over year, going on its third decade, and not slowing down, filling our hotels up, filling our restaurants up. And I think the, for the most part, it's looked upon as a positive image for Biloxi and the Mississippi Gulf Coast. Voted the number-one car show in the United States. And, you know, that's pretty significant as well. So I think it's, I'll support the $30,000. And again, majority rules, whatever we vote, I can go with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Any other comments? Mr. Guines, anything? Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery, anything? I have nothing. Mr. Shoemaker?
I'll just echo what Councilman Glavine and Councilman Lawrence said, and I'll support the $30,000 as well.
All right. We'll call for the question. All in favor of $30,000 allocation for the Cruisin' the Coast event? We'll start with Mr. Lawrence. Just state your name and your vote.
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes.
Newman, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, no.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right. It passes on a 6-1 vote. All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
To move.
Has a motion by Mr. Guines. Is there a second for the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
Mr. Glavine? Thank you, gentlemen. We'll start with Mr. Lawrence. Any questions or concerns about the consent agenda items?
Yeah, a question for Fofa on the quick claim deed for the OOP. Was that, Peter, one of y'all?
Yeah.
Was that the 20-year deal that we actually bought that from them for 20? So we own the building. I know we already own the property. So we own the building. So there was insurance, and that would come to the city.
That's right. This is to make it clear in the land records that we own the building because we did a resolution. This is to make it clear in the land records that we own the building.
All right. That's a good thing. All right. Just want to make sure we hear that straight. And I know we're, on the $38,000 on B, like in bad, are we putting that money, they lost $38,000 to B News? Or what is that $38,000 for?
Yeah, for B News, to pay for the production of B News for the, for printing, you know, expenses related to disseminating those, that news information.
I'm assuming any revenue that was generated wasn't enough to cover the entire cost. So this is the city's contribution to balance the books at the end of the year for B News.
They have those publications.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, anything else?
Yeah, on the B News, have we went out there promoting more of those ads than they? I mean, that's close to $15,000 rather than the City of Biloxi every month. I mean, that book ought to be filled up with ads.
Well, they try.
That should be the easiest selling in the world. Every home gets one of those. That's got to be a great selling point to me. Don't know if we have a staff that does that, or we just don't do anything.
No, they're hustling that. It's been looked at every day. So it's, you know, it just costs what it costs, and we try to offset that by the revenue we make.
No, I don't worry about the cost. I'm just saying, you ought to be able to fill that book up with advertisement.
We're trying.
There's nothing around here to go to every home in the City of Biloxi every month. So roughly $15,000 home. That's all I was saying. That should be an easy sell.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
That's everything.
All right. That's it. Mr. Guines?
I have none.
You're good. Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery?
I have nothing.
Nothing. I have nothing. Mr. Glavine, anything?
I just got one question on item C, and this has to do with the Mississippi Gulf Coast National Heritage Grant or Department of Marine Resources. And it says roofing and attendant repairs. What's attendant? What's the definition of attendant? And the second part of this, does this require any match or any other requirements?
Yes, it does.
Obligation?
The council has already agreed to the match on it.
Sure.
We had applied for a $60,000 grant. We were only approved for $10,000, and it's a 50-50 match. We had to contribute $10,000 to it as well. But what it would cover, it would cover replacing the roof. It would cover repairing some bricks that were put in that were not matching bricks on the sides of the building. And it would also allow us that if we get up there to do the roof and we find out there's some structural issues, we could use that money to fix those structural issues as well.
All right. So when it says roofing and attendant, is that the entry or something like that? What does attendant mean? What's the definition of that?
That's the word that they use to describe the, any structural repairs we run into or the brick, the brick repairs on the outside of the building.
All right. So we have to match it with at least 10? Are we going to spend more than $20,000 on this repair?
Well, the estimates that we've gotten from the contractor that went and looked at the project, all of it would be covered within that $20,000. Now, if they run into something, you know, unforeseen, you know, we'll have to just look at that. But for right now, we believe that this will cover it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're anticipating that there's some additional?
Ask Jerry a question?
In just a moment.
Pitt, Paul?
In just a moment. So you're expecting some additional work, I think, on the floors at some point? Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. That's going to be handled out of budget items. This was just, was covered by the grant.
By the grant. All right. Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Jerry, you said they denied. How much they denied?
We had originally asked for $60,000. We did not get the $60,000. We did get 10.
Was there any particular reason they denied that much? That's hard to believe.
No, sir. There were a number of people applying for the money, and this is just what they determined that we justified.
Okay. I was just wondering what they used to deny that much money. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question.
Give me a second. Right, I'll come back to you. Mr. Glavine, anything else? Mr. Shoemaker, nothing? Mr. McGilvery?
Director, that, the bricks you're talking about, is that the issue that you talked about?
No, sir.
Two or three weeks ago?
No, sir. That's different. That's what we budgeted money to correct. What this is, is that sometime in the past, there were some repairs done on the sides of the building, and whoever did the work just used the wrong brick. And so what this will do is allow us to replace those bricks with the right bricks. And actually, they also used the wrong mortar mix, too. You know, a lot of this stuff is regulated by the Mississippi Department of Archives and History. So this will allow us to replace that mortar with the right mortar.
So that major brick repair, we've already addressed?
In the budget, yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
All right. All right. Thank you. With that, I'll call for the question. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, and then we'll follow that with any exceptions by the council members. So all in favor of the consent agenda as presented? Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Guines, yes.
Newman, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence, are there any exceptions that you wish to oppose on the consent agenda?
None.
None.
Guines, none.
McGilvery, none.
Tisdale, none.
Glavine, no exceptions.
Shoemaker, none.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That brings us to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Krill, if you'd go through your presentations.
Okay. Item A on the agenda, Grace Properties and Investment, 13098 Michael Street. This property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on Grace Properties and Investment, 13098 Michael Street? Anybody here to speak on this matter? There being none, this hearing is closed. Item B, Mr. Krill?
Item B, J.N. Corvette LLC, 100 Caveet Street. We would ask for 30 days on this. It isn't still in violation, but I talked to the owner yesterday, and they're going to be coming forward in the next 30 days with a proposal to convert that into a restaurant.
All right. Mr. Lawrence will make that motion for an additional 30 days.
I'll second.
Mr. McGilvery will second that. Any discussion? All right. If you will, state your name and your vote, Mr. Lawrence?
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes.
Michelle.
Newman, yes. McGilvery, yes. Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right. That's unanimous. That brings us to item C.
Okay. LED Ventures LP et al., 2121 Alice Drive. That case has been resolved. Item D, Carolyn and Blake Redding, 13376 North Sandy Creek Road. That case has been resolved. Item E, Watercourse Acquisition Group LLC, 1636 Pops Ferry Road. That case has been resolved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krill. That brings us to the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
To move.
By Mr. Guines. Is there a second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Shoemaker. Okeydoke. Mr. Lawrence, I know you have something to say for the routine agenda. Let her rip.
Yes, we do. Where's Walton? Is it here?
Mr. Rhodey is making his way through the crowd to the microphone.
Hope you brought them checks, would you?
At least one, Councilman, at least one. Good afternoon, Council. As of this morning, we discussed last week, actually, that the city was in line to receive another 1.348 million, and we received that money this morning. So that was a good time, right, right in time for the council meeting, 1.348 million.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodey.
Hey, there.
Yes, sir.
McGilvery, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anything else on the routine agenda that's worthy of discussion? Anybody have a question or comment? All right. We will call for the question. All in favor of the routine agenda as presented. State your name and your vote. All right. Mr. Guines?
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes.
Newman, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right. Thank you. That's a 7-0 vote for the clerk. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
By Mr. Glavine. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. McGilvery. Any discussion? All in favor? State your name and your vote, Mr. Lawrence?
Lawrence, yes.
Guines, yes.
Newman, yes.
McGilvery, yes.
Tisdale, yes.
Glavine, yea.
Shoemaker, yes.
All right. Thank you, lady and gentlemen. We are adjourned. The next council meeting will be Tuesday, October 1st at 6:00 p.m. That's two weeks from today. Thank you.
Two weeks.
All right, Dan. Thank you, man.
Yes, sir. You have a good one.
All right.